All right. Thank you for all the great tabletop discussions. We'll now move to the panel to get a perspective from a three different school systems perspective on how they manage the communication between themselves as a superintendent and board chair. And we're really privileged to have a really distinguished group of leaders here with us this afternoon. Starting at the end of the table is Chairman James Fleming from Jefferson County. He, as you know, is one of the longest-serving board members in the state. And also a Georgia graduate with his degree in pharmacy. And we're really happy to have you with us. He's been on the school board for over 30 years. And next to him is his superintendent, Ms. Molly Howes. And she was appointed superintendent in 2010. Prior to that, she was a principal of Jefferson High School. And she's also worked for the State Department of Education as well. Next to them is our folks from Hall County, Chairman Nath Morris and Superintendent Will Schofield. Nath is in his 11th year on the school board and serves as a legislative liaison and has a real passion for maintaining local control of educational concerns. Nath's a graduate of Georgia and works for Purdue Farms as a U.S. breeder/sales manager and has been involved in the poultry industry for over 24 years. So, he's right at home here at UGA. Poultry in UGA, can't get any better than that.
You're like a tick-balling.
We made sure of that. Will Schofield's a triple dog. Not that we're pushing that, but he's in his 27th year as an education leader and professional and has been a high school math teacher, assistant principal, and serving 14 years now as superintendent in three different school systems. He's currently superintendent in Hall County with 27,000 students. And finally, Chairman Carol Boyce and Superintendent Alvin Wilbanks. Carol was elected in November 2004 and has a real passion for public education. During her career, she's taught middle school, language arts, and social studies and has her own design firm as well. And has a degree in English and elementary ed from Furman University and a master's degree in middle grades education from Georgia State. And she also got her degree in interior design. So, she knows how to make things work, I can tell. And also, Alvin Wilbanks, CEO and superintendent at Gwinnett County Public Schools, a position he's held since 1996. And prior to that, he was also, he was president of Gwinnett Technical College, actually the founding president at Gwinnett Technical College, which opened in 1984. Since 2000, he's been an advisor to two Georgia governors and the U.S. Secretary of Education on crafting significant education reform legislation at the state and federal level. Mr. Wilbanks received his bachelor's and master's degrees from the University of Georgia and an educational specialist degree from Georgia State University. Please join me in welcoming our panelists for this afternoon.
Thanks, David. So, we've assembled a diverse set of school districts, a Goldilocks panel, large, medium, and small. I won't say hot, cold, and just right. Large, medium, and small. And we've asked them to share with you their experience on a particular kind of communication policymaking issue, not so much the issue itself, but the board superintendent communication relations. Share a little bit about that, how they wound up addressing it, what the challenge was, and what they've learned from that. And we're going to give each pair about 10 minutes to sort of share that with you. And then we're going to come back around, once you've heard each other, and give you a chance to make some final comments, observations, share some thoughts. So, you get two cracks of it if we stay to the 10-minute one. And I think we have a starting order? Okay?
Thank you very much. We appreciate being here. And anyone who has not learned something today, am I not turned on today?
Right now, you're all cold.
We just thank everybody for allowing us to be here today. And it's been a wonderful day. I feel like I've either been to a revival or had a shot of Geritol or something. Makes me feel like I can do this 37 more years. So, maybe we need to do this once a year because I certainly hope that Mr. Fleming will stick around 30 more years. I am very fortunate in Jefferson County to have a longstanding board. We have, the longevity on our board begins with Mr. Fleming, but our newest member of our board, we usually have one seat that changes. And we did hear this morning that that one seat can totally change. You have a new board every time. And that's something that we've definitely experienced in Jefferson County. But Mr. Fleming leadership has really led us to where we are today with having the relationships that we have. He has led us through the best of times and the worst of times, through a hotly debated consolidation battle. He's been the board chairman and on the board through, I think chairman, through five different superintendents. And so, that wisdom and that sage advice and that ability for one person to bring that dynamic and to really cool heads a lot of times. And so, that leadership of that one person, I think, is very important. One of the things that, and I think it was greatly led by Mr. Fleming, is when they hired me four years ago, they weren't just trying to fill the position of a retiring superintendent with someone to put in that position. They were very clear on what their expectations were and what they wanted accomplished for our school system. Before they offered me the job, they said, "These are the things that we want. How can you accomplish those?" And they were part of the interview questions, although I had been part of that school system and the high school principal for 18 years. Coming into this role is totally different. It was really starting over at square one. And since I had been there a long time, people thought, "Well, that was a shoo-in." Well, I knew it was not. And this board saw the wisdom in doing a board search. And I certainly appreciated the fact that they did that and then found me right under their feet, so to speak. But the things that they told me very clearly to begin with is they expected the superintendent to be the instructional leader. And that's what they expected for my role and responsibilities to largely entail. Because regardless of our level of poverty and all those kinds of things that you can make excuses about, our board has very high expectations for our teachers and for all of our students. Our board models the idea of efficacy, that we have a can-do attitude in our school system. Mr. Fleming particularly also communicated to me that he expected the new superintendent to lead the district in a very intensive, and I call it for real, strategic planning process, which we use GSBA to lead us through that and to involve the entire community, the community at large, in that strategic planning process. And so, we already had things lined up there together with the expectation that the superintendent be instructional leader and that we would have a community-led, the education community, business, faith community, as well as board members. And one most important aspect were the students. And so, we went through a year-long strategic planning process. And four years into it, we're still operating, tweaking, adjusting, going back and revisiting. But I think that's one of the things that got us off to the best start, is that we had very clear expectations of one another. I knew what they expected and I could accept that role or choose not to, to choose to go fishing with my husband instead. One of the other things that I think has helped us is that our board operates under several common operational beliefs. But one of the most important beliefs that may be shared by some of you in the room and maybe not by others is that our Board of Education has one employee. And the superintendent is that one employee. And it's my responsibility, although all others are approved by the board, that that's my responsibility and my accountability to get the best of those people. And so, success or failure comes back to me. And I understand that very clearly with my recommendations to our board. I'm going to leave some time for Mr. Fleming to say some things because I could go on and on, but he told me to leave him two minutes of this 10, so.
I think when we had a national principal of the year on our doorstep, we weren't too stupid in the process. But I think my philosophy over these years has been a lame one, but it's been to surround myself with good people, great people, and keep my mouth shut. And I think it's served well in certain cases. But even as we talk about dress codes or district lines or closing schools, it's all about communication. And communication is, you know, it's not, it's a simple word, but it's a hard process and it takes time and it takes effort and it takes planning and diligence. And all, GSBA and SBA, they have all these great trainings on board members and relationships. And it all has to sink in. It's good work, but until it goes from the head to the heart, and it's all about that plan that we talked about, everything's got to come back to the plan which is pointing toward the student. And so, if you stay out of the roadblocks and try to facilitate when you can and try to make sure that the board as a whole is supporting the plan, is supporting the superintendent and the leadership team, and give them the opportunity to do their job and to, you know, get the feedback from us when they need it and direction. But, you know, it's a process and it takes, it's like almost being married and a family, except, you know, you're on reality TV a lot of the times. But I think that's the key, is being able to listen. And that's part of, that's the main thing of communication, be it your teachers, your students, your stakeholders. If they know you're listening and they know you're looking down the road, you're looking for the student's benefit, then they will buy into what's going on. You know, you'll have your distractors and your hard moments, but, you know, it all has to come back to the student. And I think we do that well. We've done it, we do it well. It's better right now than we have in 30 years. And that's due, I think, to Molly's leadership also, certainly. But it's a process and it takes nurturing.
Good afternoon. Again, my name's Nath Morris with the Hall County School District Chairman. Dr. Hart's video this morning ended up with some geese flying in a V. And it makes me think about, a lot of times when you see the geese flying in a V, there's one side that's longer than the other. You know why that is? Because it has more geese on that side. Which brings me to the point that a lot of common sense and a lot of problems that we have to discuss don't always have complex answers. The answers are simple, and we think about it, the answers are sometimes stared us in the face. But communication is talked about a lot today. An issue that we had that was a little bit of a challenging policy issue, we had, it's back in 2008 when our budget, we all started having some budget crunch times. And safety was still a big part of our initiative. And we had one board member that wanted to, you know, we had SROs in all our high schools and wanted to put, talked about putting SROs in the middle school. And one of the things that we do, we talk about, we talk about communication and it's always so important that even though there comes a time where we have our discussions, we go in for a vote, we need to become, we need to come out of that vote, whether it's 3-2, whether it's 5-0, come out and support the policy that we have just passed. We had one board member, there was four other ones, and I was included in the four, that, you know, sat there and said, "We just can't afford this right now." But we listened to each other, we listened to each other's arguments and reasons for, the reasons we needed to do that. And we came out and we said, "We're going, even during this tough budget time, we're going to put some SROs in our schools. We need safe schools. We got that commitment." And it also comes down to just really wanting to make sure we're doing what's right for the kids.
Now, honey, Jimmy said this was like a marriage, so let me chime in here just a little bit.
Your time is just to say.
Let's talk about that SRO issue because I think it illustrates, there's a difference between important and urgent. And so, often we make the mistake of thinking everything that's important is also urgent. And I think what I've really appreciated, Alvin, about this current board that I have, and by the way, I've had 26 board members in three different school districts, I've never had a bad board member. Board members are different. Board members are people. We need to look at each other with respect and treat each other as people. But I think the idea of a bad board member is kind of a misnomer. I think what you have is a lack of trust and a lack of communication. But in this particular issue that involved the school, the school resource officer, the four individuals that did not want to expand the program and I, all felt the same way, but this one individual felt so passionately and so strongly that I think our board very wisely took a look at, not a solid line, not an oscillating line, but a dotted line and said, "If he feels that strongly about this particular issue, we don't need to decide it this month. Let's get some more information. Let's chew on this. Let's come back to it again in a month." And it was three months later, after having several people coming in, doing some parent surveys, doing an awful lot of research, that all of a sudden, it was a 5-0 vote. But it was a 5-0 vote in favor of the one individual member's idea that in spite of the fact that we have $20 million less than we had last year, we've got to keep our boys and girls safe. And I think as the six of us look back on that decision, it was a beautiful example of trust. A beautiful example of that which is important is rarely urgent. One of the things that I coach my principals, particularly new principals, somehow we equate making a decisive, quick decision with being powerful and strong. And I try to tell them often, it's just the opposite. That true leaders, true leadership is deliberate. It collects information. It is in a search for the truth. And this may seem like a small issue, but I think, Nath, sweetheart, I think this whole idea of how we came to the decision 5-0, that yes, we need to increase the budget by $350,000 and put school resource officers in our middle schools, illustrates the fact, and Will Rogers said it best, he said, "You've got to kind of give and take in this old world. Rarely is it black and white. Rarely are you right and I'm wrong." And again, if we can truly set up that opportunity to search for the truth, to search for the best answer without me being convinced before we get into the meeting that I've already got the best answer. And Alvin, I don't know if you'd agree with that, but I think that kind of leadership rarely comes without a little gray hair on the head. You've got to get old enough to quit worrying about who gets the credit and start saying, "Can't we sit around a table as men and women that care about boys and girls and come up with the best, with the best solution?"
Why did you mention gray hair?
One final thought as it gets to that. During the process of that time in between, when it first came up and we did take the vote, I think, and this played a big role in it, it's important to involve other people. If you've got a board member, a board of five members, and the five members make the decisions all the time and it's only, you know, get some input. We had time to talk to the parents, see what they felt, talk to the teachers, see how they felt, talk to the sheriff's department, see how they could help and accommodate us. We took the time to make the decision, we involved all of our stakeholders, and that makes the ultimate decision a lot better off and more gratifying to all the parties involved.
I think we have a segue on the hair issue. You've got Mr. Handel.
We are from Gwinnett, and as you know, it's a very large system. We have a board of five members and we have an excellent superintendent. So, I think our work has certainly been much easier because of the expertise and the wisdom of Alvin Wilbanks. He is by far the best. But of course, I'm not prejudiced at all. I think one of the things that he has led us very beautifully for is the idea of communication. And anytime that there's any issue out there, he is very good about making sure that all board members know exactly, we all have the same information. He makes sure that if one person has a question or one has asked for some specific information, it's not that it's not a turf battle by any means. He makes sure that everyone has all of it. And in doing so, I think as a group, we have put teaching and learning as our main goal without a doubt, and every decision that is made puts the kids first. And everything that we decide, is it something that is going to, better student achievement, is this for the kids, not for the adults, just exactly what is the purpose. And we work very closely as Bernie Kirkland so eloquently said, "We are a governance team and we work well with that." I think perhaps, Mr. Wilbanks, you would agree, one of the things that we, that helped us get to this point, and I'm the newest member on the board and I've been there for nine years. So, as I came into this, it was pretty much already set up and I didn't have the opportunity to help form it as we go along. So, I was able to have a good situation to start with. So, that certainly helped us. And we have a board member who's been with us over 40 years and she is remarkable, Louise Radloff. I don't know if you have had the opportunity, many people in the room, I do know her, but she is, she is just outstanding and is a certain mentor for many of us. But one thing that we did decide that I think has been very, very crucial in our development as a superintendent and board team is the Reform Governance in Action Program, which was developed by Don McAdams. And if you have not had the opportunity to read or see this book, What School Boards Can Do, it is, in addition to what the Georgia School Board Association, this approach is very good as well because it very clearly defines the line that, you know, that nebulous line that we were talking about just a few minutes ago. But anyway, that is something that we decided, what, about what, eight years ago or that we went into this program? And it has been a core decision-making process for us and sort of an approach that we have taken. So, would you like to share, Mr. Wilbanks?
First of all, I knew if Molly and Will talked first, we wouldn't have much to say and say much. So, I'm just going to talk from the cuff here. One of the things that I think we've heard throughout the conversation, and I only was able to be here at noon, so I wouldn't hear this morning, but today, I think some things really determine whether or not the board superintendent are going to be operating as a team or not. One of them's trust. One of them obviously is integrity. While there is a lot of similarities, there's a difference. I think there has to be the trust that people will do what they say they're going to do. I also think you need to know what each other's roles are and then work to make sure that that continues to be that way. I think the board basically has three levers in its governance. One is it hires the superintendent, particularly in this state. In some states, they are obviously elected. But here, they're able to hire the superintendent and therefore you can obviously, through that process, choose who you think will make the best partner on your team. I sometimes think a board superintendent team is sort of like a law firm. You know, in a law firm, you always have a junior partner. Well, the superintendent is a junior partner on the law firm. Second lever that the board has is policy. And I think this is one of the things that was really moved forward with us when we were with the Reform Governance in Action Program, is develop reform policy. You know, there are basically two kinds of policy. There's reform policy and there's operational policy. If you really want to move the district forward, if you want to move forward some changes that you know need to occur or take place, then you develop and approve reform policies. And obviously, we all know that policy is to be carried out, is to be implemented. And I think that's one of the things that I think are really one of the three levers, one of the strongest. The third lever is obviously meetings. And I think boards that are effective, and I'm just, it's a privilege for me to say I've worked with Nate and also Jimmy. Jimmy and I have been on a couple of committees and, gosh, every time, I was there all the time and somebody else was there all the time. It was Jimmy. So, you know, we have great board members in this state. And I know a lot of you in my own board, Ms. Boyce and the other four. But I think unless we really take advantage of the time that we have together, and quite frankly, it's very little time when you think about it. So, one of the things I try to do is make sure every board member knows what they're voting on. It doesn't, it's not my decision to determine how they vote. Now, I have obviously a preference, but that's their decision. But at least it's my responsibility to make sure that they know enough about the issue to vote on. And if you don't, delay it until you do. And I think that's one of the things that has, you know, helped us to make sure, if I get a question from a board member like, you know, "What was SAT or ACT school in my school?" Well, the same database that I get that from for one board member, I got all of them there. So, I just send them, I recognize the board member that asked that question and just send them all there. I don't do a weekly packet. I do it nightly. I learned a long time ago, bad news don't get better with time. So, if you have bad news, alert the board. Put it in a context. Don't just tell them, you know, things are going to torment an handbasket, but here's the likelihood of what has, here's what has happened, here's the likelihood of some ramifications from it. And I think they appreciate that. But I also like to make sure that they know about anything, even though it's a small thing, if it happens to get the attention of the press. It's like a bus wreck. A bus wreck, you know, it's just a fender bender, nobody was hurt, but it's like an airplane crash when it gets on the news. So, just let them know that everything's there. If in the first day or so of school, if a kid gets misplaced, you don't have to know the name of the kid, you don't even have to know the school, but just let them know there's a youngster that's unaccounted for, it's being worked on. You know? And that's an easy thing, that they at least know we know about it, we don't have any idea where they may be. We may not know who it is, but it's being worked on. And I think that's the status that I try to operate with the board. And it's served me well for several years. And we do have a constituent services thing where if a member of the public, a parent calls a board member, then they call a number and we try to make sure we handle that. But we also close the loop. And I think that's the thing you have to do with the board. And if I was a board member and I kept telling my superintendent something needs to be done and nothing's ever done, I'd probably meddle myself. But at the same time, I do think as the board practices its management oversight, then that communication between the board and superintendent is obviously essential. And again, I just throw this out one more time. I've learned a long time ago, bad news does not get better with time. So, if you see some things that's not good, make sure you let the board know about it in the context that it needs to be where when somebody comes up to them, then they can at least give them some response to it without saying, "No, I don't know." We just had a thing recently that happened, I don't mind telling this. We've been trying to get stop-arm cameras on our buses for years. Or certain people in the district have. I was not that interested for a long time, but we finally decided we would. And the company that we ordered to bid to had had an issue in Scargo. As a matter of fact, three of their people were convicted of fraud. Of course, you know, Scargo and fraud's not totally opposite. If you've Scargo, pardon the phrase there. But the people that did the... pardon the phrase there, but the, the people that did the, the transportation department actually employed a consultant to draft the RFI, and then took the RFI to issue an RFP. And they did it right, it was a textbook case. But they gave me a report, that was 100 and something pages, on page about 67, they mentioned that this company had had that in Chicago. Well, I operate off an executive summary, okay? Executive summary didn't indicate that. Well, obviously, these two companies are at each other, I think one of them bought the other one out at some point in time, so they called the press, and the press then calls a board member, "Did you know y'all bought something? I wanted to bid to a company that had been convicted of fraud." Well, had I known that, I would have certainly told the board, it would have ended there. But the board said, "No, I, we don't have any, no idea." So that's why I'm saying, don't keep anything from the board, make sure you tell them as soon as you know, you know enough about it to explain it a little bit, put it in context. I think that's probably the best thing I could really say in terms of board superintendent relations. And if there's trust, and if there is a working relationship that you have, then I think that can go a long ways to dealing with whatever issues that come up.
Thank you. I'd add, you mentioned the constituent service piece, that was one thing that we did implement after our work with the RGA, it has been extremely helpful, because we were finding that if, if a particular constituent had a problem, they would perhaps board shop, they would go to different board members and look for different answers. And by coming together with a, with a plan where we, if a constituent would call one board member, we would say, "All right, we will look into it," and we will, we, we identified one person within our, our staff who would handle all of, all of the basic constituent issues. And that way, it would get back and make sure that with the system was addressing whatever the problem was, and would get back with that particular individual, and then let, let the board member know exactly what the resolution was for that thing. It also has allowed us to look at issues perhaps that we need to look at as a system, and see, "Well, is this an area where we really do need to focus some attention?" It has been a, I think that has been a good, a good help, and that's something that, that we learned along the way.
Thank you all for taking time to participate and share with us. Before we release you, I want to ask you one specific question, one for the board chairs and one for the superintendents. Let me start with the board chairs and ask you to speak to your peers in the audience, your board members, and share with them one specific, good practice, piece of advice for maintaining open communication with your superintendent and an ongoing relationship that way. You're only as good as your last conversation, and how do you keep it going even when it gets tough? What's your single best piece of advice, best practice, you would tell other board members for how to make sure that in spite of how difficult a conversation may get, how do you keep the lines of communication open? What do you do? So this is for the board chairs?
I think, I think a lot of it just boils down to trust.
How do you build that?
You have a relationship, well, you, you start from day one, with no, with no hidden agendas, you're, you're open, you're honest, you, you say what you mean and mean what you say, and I think it goes both ways, it's building that trust between every board member and the superintendent, and even amongst, across the board, board members, it's the same way.
So you're, so you feel comfortable being able to share what you think, your thoughts, your ideas, and that's an open relationship?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And we have a board that, that is in that situation, and I know those, those boards don't always exist, but in our situation...
And what happens when that, what happens in your experience when that doesn't exist?
Well, I haven't had that situation in 14 years of being on my board, but I can see it just starting over with, with some people. I mean, you know, you can only go as far as your, your word, and you hope it was reciprocated by the other party. But it is, I'm going to be truthful and ask for the same in return.
Okay.
I would certainly agree, it seems to me, trust is, is the basic part, you know, and why, what, why is everybody there? I mean, we're all there for the kids and student achievement, and if that's, if that's why a board number, a member is not there, they really do not belong in that position. But I do understand that some boards have to deal with situations, and ours is not like that. We seem to be all on the right page and, and get along together very well, but, but I just cannot imagine operating in an, in a situation without trust between the members of the board and the superintendent, it just, it would be beyond me, but that is very, very crucial.
Well, I think, you know, when you're, when you're in a problem that probably is an impasse, and, and be it with a board member or with the superintendent, lots of times you need to step back just a little bit and focus on what you agree on, and not so much on what you disagree. And lots of times, you'll find out you're a lot closer than you think you might be. And so, if you, you know, you kind of need to also think about, you know, is, is this an issue that I'm going to stand on, or is this an issue that, that, you know, is not one of those issues, and I can reach a compromise and, and look at it from that standpoint? Too often, we, we have those issues that are, that are not as important, and, but we tend to stand on them, and, and the press picks up on that and sees that as, as a weakness in your board, but you need to focus on the positive.
Okay. Let me turn to our superintendents and ask them, speak to your colleagues for just a second, what's your best advice, your best practices for ensuring that your communications with the board remain open and ongoing? What do you, what do you do? Give, give them something specific. I know we heard some ideas from you, Alvin, so we'll go, we'll take you last, you can think about a new one. So what do you, what do you do in practice that makes that work?
I think one of the things that we have to do is almost like the marriage analogy, you have to grow together, and you have to learn together. And I feel that it's a large part of my responsibility as superintendent to give and direct our board in areas of their own professional learning and growth, and to help them learn to become reflective practitioners, and to understand more than just that face of the problem, but the depth of the problem. And so often, something seems like such a simple answer, but you get into the administrative, just like the dress code thing, I mean, you can seem simple right there at first, put everybody in a uniform, everything's okay. Things are not quite that simple. And so, using the tools that we have available, there's so many that are here, Alvin spoke of, of something that they're using in their district, or have used. GSBA is full of, of opportunities, and I say, you know, always bring that self-reflection, self-assessment instrument that the board, that GSBA has on their website. It helps ground the board in what the real work is. Those are the standards that have been set forth by the State of Georgia for Boards of Education, and that always brings us back to a place that we can really reflect on the work that we should be about.
Thank you.
You know, I don't know how many of you know what a Wordle is. A Wordle is those things that our kindergartners do now, where they put in a bunch of words, or they write a paragraph, and then the word that is said the most comes out as the biggest word in this collage of letters and words. If I had a Wordle for today, and the words that we use are important, I've heard trust at least 100 times. Back at our table in the small group tabletop discussions, somebody asked what I thought was a very intuitive and perceptive question, he said, "What do you mean by trust?" I, I think it's very important that we talk about that, listening to my friend to the left with a little more gray hair than me. Trust is doing what you say you're going to do. And I think that's one piece of it, but I think that's only one piece of it when it comes to the board superintendent relationship, because I ask parents, I ask teachers, I ask communities all the time, "Do our schools today look an awful lot like the schools that I attended?" They do. As a matter of fact, they look a lot like the schools that my parents attended. And if we're real honest with ourselves, our schools today look an awful lot like the schools that my grandparents attended. Folks, it should not be so. We need some radical transformations in public education, we need some innovation. And if we're going to have innovation within any organization, we need to be risk takers. And if you don't have trust amongst the stakeholders in an organization, there will be no risk taking. So not only, as Mr. Willbanks said, does trust involve doing what you say you're going to do, the reason that I trust my board on another level, the reason that we step back and try some things that quite honestly, sometimes just don't work very well, is because I know I won't be judged by my five board members based on what happened yesterday. Trust involves judging intentions. Trust involves judging a pattern of behaviors. And when my board looks at me, they look at eight years of behavior, they look at eight years of performance. They don't look at the fact that we tried to do something radically different last week, and quite honestly, it didn't work worth a darn. So, again, the words that we use are very important, and I think trust is the word that I've heard over and over again when it comes to that superintendent-board relationship. Yes, Alvin, trust means doing what you say you're going to do. That's fundamental, trust 101. But being part of a public school in the year 2013, I want the kind of trust from my board members that says, "I want this organization to be a risk-taking organization, a thoughtful, risk-taking organization." I always use this analogy when it comes to football, maybe at the University of Georgia, football analogy isn't very apropos today. But I say, in public education, it is third down and 27. And for the most part, we're still running the ball off tackle. We better be willing to step back and start slinging it and trying some things and make some transformational changes in terms of preparing boys and girls for the future, or we will be out of business. So trust is the advice that I give.
Thank you. Alvin, last words to you on the panel?
I think one of the things that we have to remember is, none of us really like to be surprised, so I think communications ought to, you know, to ask yourself, do they really need to know? And if the answer's yes, then they need to know, they need to talk in the appropriate way. But it's got to go beyond that, I, I think communication's involved, you know, not letting everything be personal to you. Occasionally, a board member has a constituent or two that's on their back, and they just may need to make a statement of board. I understand that, I don't take it personal. I'll only take it personal if they start hitting me. I really do think...
That does cross the line.
That's, that's way over the line, you know? I want to go on record.
Alvin has a line, that's where it is.
But, you know, the, there's also things where you have some fundamental differences in. And I think you just need to be open and honest with that, and I think that always pays off. You, what I like to call have directed discussion about it, so leave the emotions out of it, talk about the issues. And, you know, occasionally, it's even okay to say, you know, "Boy, I, I just need to talk you out of that, I don't think you want to do that." I've had them tell me that more than once, I don't think we want to hear that. As a matter of fact, just don't ever bring it up again. Well, yeah, it's, it's, I understand that, but I think the, the important thing is you try to do whatever adds to whatever your beliefs and commitments are. And is what you're going to do, going to move that down the road, is it going to serve the people it's supposed to serve? But more importantly, will it do right in terms of you carrying out your duties and responsibilities as the people you're supposed to carry them out for? And communications ought to always pass that test in busting.
Thank you, thank you all. Let's thank these folks for being willing to share a little bit of themselves with us. It's always easier to come make a presentation than it is to talk a little about what you do and how you do it, and open that up, so thank you all for being willing to do that. You can come on back and join us.